Okay. Want to welcome everyone. Good evening. Today is October 28, 2025. This is the concurrent meeting of the City Council and the Geological Hazard Abatement District Board, also referred to as the GAD Board. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if we can have Councilmember Zermeño to please do the pledge allegiance for us, please. Thank you. And so this is part one of a two-part meeting. I'd like to ask Ms. Morrison if you can please take role.
I would be happy to, Chair. Board member Zermeño. Board member Roche.
Here.
Board member Bonilla.
Present.
Board member Andrews.
Present.
Board member Syrop.
Present.
And board member Goldstein.
Present.
And Chair Salinas.
Present, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is public comments. This is reserved for anybody who would like to make a public comment on something that is on the agenda or not on the agenda. I don't see, I don't have any cards for public comment, and I don't have anybody online that would like to make a public comment. So I'd like to close public comment and move on to item number one, which is our consent item. And this is approved the Geological Hazard Abatement District Board minutes of the board meeting of June 24, 2025. And I believe our GAD manager Haley Ralston will either kick this off, or I can take it from here, either way.
We don't have any comments on the minutes.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. And then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm with the item.
Moved by board member Andrews.
Second.
Second by board member Roche. And if there are, actually, before we vote, let me open this up for public comment, see if there's any public comment. I do not have any public comment cards, and I don't see anybody online that wants to make a public comment, so I will close public comment. And then, Madam City Clerk, if you can please take, or I don't know who's going to take the, take the role. Yeah. Oh, there you go.
Councilmember Bonilla, or member Bonilla. And member Syrop. Thank you.
And item passes unanimously. The second item is our legislative business item, which is Resolution 25-02, Accepting Petition for Annexation of the Parcel Group III Development and Directing a Public Hearing Be Held Regarding the Request for Annexation. And GAD manager Haley Ralston will take this off, kick this off.
Thank you, Chair Salinas. Good evening, Chair and Board members. I'm Haley Ralston with NGO, who serves as the GAD manager for the Hayward Geological Hazard Abatement District, and I'm joined here by Amara Morrison, who is with Fenmore and serves as GAD clerk and GAD attorney for the Hayward GAD as well. And the item before the board tonight is Resolution 2502, Accepting the Petition for Annexation for the Parcel Group III Development into the Hayward GAD and Directing a Public Hearing to Be Held Regarding the Request for Annexation. City of Hayward's infill checklist item number 48 for the Parcel Group III Development required the development to annex into the Hayward GAD for the protection of the development from potential geologic hazards. Excuse me. The development consists of a multifamily residential building and an educational building, along with other improvements such as surface drainage facilities, subsurface drains, and retaining walls. Included in the petition for annexation is a plan of control specific to the Parcel Group III development that outlines the GAD's responsibilities within the development. And this plan of control is separate from the other plans of controls for the other developments within the Hayward GAD. GAD law requires that a public hearing on the petition for annexation be placed on a future agenda at least 20 days after notice of public hearing is sent to the property owners within the Parcel Group III development. The petition included with the packet this evening indicates two property owners within the proposed annexation area, and the copy does not include signatures, but we, as the GAD manager and GAD clerk, do have and execute a copy with us here today and on file with the GAD clerk. So with that, GAD staff are available with any questions the board may have regarding this item.
Thank you. First, I'd like to open up for any questions from the GAD board to Director, yes. Member, or Director.
Yeah, Roche, that's okay.
Board member. Roche.
I just want to, so is this one of the parcels where, like, building was completed, and now they want to move into the GAD? What parcel is this again?
Yes. Parcel Group III are two parcels that I believe used to kind of be city-owned or state-owned and had been dedicated to others since for development. And this is just on the northern side of Tennyson, so across from the Hayward-Somi and Hideaway Developments below the Reserve Development along Tennyson there.
Okay, so we were sort of waiting, weren't we waiting for that to finish?
And they, typically, the annexation process happens kind of during grading or development, but before completion of the project is finished. So this community, or this process is happening before final construction or tenants move in.
Oh, okay. And then, are they now gonna, will they now start, like, are there tenants living there, and will they start being assessed then for the GAD?
Correct. This is a slightly unique situation compared to other developments within the GAD, where this one, the assessment, will be placed on the property tax bill for the buildings themselves, not directly the tenants, as the multifamily residential is their apartments. So it's a little bit different than, say, a condo townhome or a single-family residential. So, so the levy will be placed based on the, basically how we will be setting this up and be presenting to the board later at following meetings, is there's an assessment based on the square footage for each of these buildings that will be placed on the property tax bills for each.
I see, and then the property owner pays that.
Correct.
Instead of the individual owner.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Member Andrews.
Was the HOA or any of the residents notified, or did they have any comments that came in when the agenda was out?
We have not received any comments regarding this item prior to the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Member Goldstein.
Thank you. If they, if they decided for some reason not to be part of the GAD, what are their other options? Are they completely responsible on their own for maintaining the geological safety?
Yes, it seems that if there is a decision not to be part of the GAD, that any geologic hazards that impacted the development, whether it be the improvements or buildings themselves or anything within that community, they would be up to, it would be on their own to, to respond to, as the GAD only provides special benefit to those that are included and paying for the special benefit.
Okay, I got you. And, sorry, I forgot my other question, but if I think of it, I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Councilmember Roche, or member Roche.
Thanks. I wanted to ask, you know, and because these are going to be multi, are these more high-rise buildings that are multifamily units? Because my question is, does the GAD then have the resources to, to absorb, you know, if there was some sort of, you know, event, you know, with a multifamily building like that, will the assessment be enough to absorb any sort of, like, repairs that would have to be made?
Yes. So what goes into determining an assess, an appropriate assessment level for any development or any resident within the GAD is considering all of the, you know, routine maintenance operations and expenses, capital improvements, but also putting away reserves for a large-scale repair or significant geologic hazard events. So when we bring those items to the board later at a later public hearing, we have factored those, that item already in into the assessment long-term. It does take, you know, several years for the development or GAD itself to build those reserves to adequately respond, but that is definitely the value of having a GAD, is to build up those reserves to respond to those large-scale geologic hazard events.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I will now move on to public comment. I don't have any public comment cards, and there is no public comment online, so I'd like to close public comment, and I'll come back to the GAD board for a motion. Moved by member Goldstein.
Second.
Second by member Andrews. And then, Madam Clerk, if you can please take role.
Members Zermeño.
And it looks like the item has passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to next item, which is the GAD manager's report. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. Not too much going on, fortunately. Obviously, had, we have just finished our monitoring event for fall, so we will prepare the report and see if there's any items to address prior to winter, but I know that site, or the areas the GAD is currently responsible for, which are the Reserve Development and the Hideaway Development, are performing well. The GAD did do a relatively minor landslide repair along a maintenance road within the open space at the Reserve Development, and that went well, so that'll all be buttoned up before the winter. And then we will also be preparing the flyer as new homeowners have moved into the Hayward-Somi Development, and so we'll just do another flyer for, you know, continued education about the GAD and their involvement, so. And then upcoming items related to this here, we'll have a couple other meetings relating to the annexation process here for Parcel Group III, and we will also be working with the Hayward-Somi developer to transfer responsibilities from the GAD to, or from the developer to the GAD. So we expect that to possibly come up during this fiscal year as well. So that concludes my GAD manager report.
Thank you. Next item is GAD board members' reports, referrals, and future agenda items. Member, member Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, board member, chair.
I'm a chair.
I wanted to know if we were looking at the Hayward Fault, making sure we were being safe, as there are more reports coming out about the fault, and making sure we're coordinating with the Public Safety Committee with the GAD?
Yes, thank you. That's definitely the reason why City of Hayward wanted to establish a GAD for these communities, is because the Hayward Fault does run through the open space, you know, adjacent to these communities. And so, in the event that there is movement along the Hayward Fault or within this area that impacts the neighboring improvements or residences, that's where the GAD will respond. Will assess, you know, what, what damages hopefully have not happened, but, you know, if anything has been impacted, and the GAD will use its reserves fund if needed to, to respond to those. In addition, typically, standards now for building and development requires offsets from, from the fault, you know, that help with that offset or any surface rupture that could impact the neighboring improvements.
Does the GAD inform the residents of emergency preparedness? And is that something that you can afford to, to us as members, so we'll have? And is that going to be discussed with the Public Safety Committee?
So the GAD will act promptly, you know, in the event of a geologic hazard, if it needs to act immediately, have contractors standing by to act as such, but then if we do need to, you know, enter a specific residence or such, we will obviously notify them, reach out to them, and, and request, you know, if we need access immediately or, you know, within 72 hours at least or so notice.
Okay. I think the Public Safety Committee should look at what, some kind of plan or look at how we're interacting with the GAD prior to the event. So if that's something that you can work on with the Public Safety Committee and the liaisons there, that'd be great.
Sure, we'd be happy to.
Thanks.
Thank you. And just so that you know, the Public Safety Committee is member Roche, member Bonilla, and me. So you can email.
Great.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more questions or reports or referrals or future agenda items, I'd like to report that there is no future meetings scheduled, and, but all future meetings will be noticed. And so with that said, thank you, Ms. Morrison and Ms. Ralston. Oh, is there something else, or? No? Oh, go ahead.
My understanding is that we'll be returning at some point in December potentially, but that, that date, that future December date has not yet been determined.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So with that said, I'd like to adjourn the GAD board, and we will convene the next meeting momentarily. So, thank you. Okay. Okay. I'll wait for the, oh, we're on, okay, we're live. Okay. Okay. Welcome back, everybody. I'd like to convene the City Council meeting portion. Today's date is October 28, 2025. Welcome to City Hall. This is a City Council meeting, and we've already done roll call and pledge allegiance. So, Mr. City Attorney, if you can please do closed session announcement.
Mayor and Council, there was a closed session convened at 5:30 to discuss labor. All members were present in that meeting, adjourned at 6:45, and that's the report.
Thank you. Next item. Thank you. Apologies for cutting you off. Next item is public comment. This is reserved for anybody in a public comment, this is reserved for anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment on something on the agenda or not on the agenda. I don't have any, I do have a call, I do have someone on public comment. TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Hi, good evening, Council. I'm TJ with Hayward Concerned Citizens, and I just wanted to highlight that today was National First Responders Day. So I wanted to acknowledge and appreciate our Hayward Fire Department and paramedics, Hayward Police and dispatch, and Alameda County EMS for their service to all of our residents. I especially want to give a extra shout-out to our firefighters who responded on an explosion that caused a fire at a residence on Dobble and Spencer in the Hayward Hills last week. I happened to be in the area, and I saw the trucks all zooming up Carlos B. off of Mission, and all I could think was, I'm very glad that the hill was not converted to a one-lane, because you never know when disaster is going to prompt a quick response or a quick evacuation. And having that easy access is really important, so this kind of punctuated it for me. Anyway, so thank you again, first responders, for all you do on behalf of our group, and have a good night.
Thank you. I don't have any public comment cards, and that is the last speaker online, so I'd like to close public comments and go to city manager's comment.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. We had a very active Saturday, so I have quite a bit in, in city manager comments today. So Hayward Public Library's Fifth Annual Trunk or Treat and Promise Fest was held this past Saturday, October 25th, at the Heritage Plaza in collaboration with Hayward Promised Neighborhoods. Despite the rain, the event was bigger than ever, serving approximately 13,400 community members. More than 57 community partner agencies came together to support this annual signature event, providing volunteers, programming, and financial support, as well as decor and free resources, and candy, of course. The Ever Generous Five Six Safer donated and distributed 3,000 free meals. Hard provided a performance stage, rock climbing wall, and various activities. HPD and HFD brought public safety vehicles. The Animal Shelter and Fleet Division brought other city vehicles. The library brought Kirby and provided craft activities, and City Maintenance Services created an amazing haunted house. Families were able to enjoy bubbles and games on the lawn area and free face painting provided by volunteers from UC Berkeley. Shabok College and California State University East Bay students also provided volunteer support at the event. When the rain arrived, Hayward Promised Neighborhoods provided all the families with ponchos, so families could continue to participate in the event. And along with Trunk or Treat that day, the city launched our Hayward Rides bike giveaway program, which is also made possible by two California Air Resources Board grants being managed by our Transportation and Environmental Services Division. One of, if not the, largest municipal bike programs of its kind in the country, Hayward Rides gave away more than 100 bikes to pre-selected recipients and provided information to other community members about how to participate. The program's goal is to provide Hayward residents, especially high school students and lower-income community members, with greater access to cycling and affordable, sustainable, and active mode of transport. All told, Hayward Rides will give away approximately 2,000 free bikes in batches through the end of 2026, including urban and entry-level mountain bikes, as well as some e-bikes for adults. All recipients also receive a helmet, front and rear lights, a bike lock, kickstand, and a tire repair kit, and are connected to Safe Bike and Bike Maintenance classes. City staff and project managers, partners have conducted extensive community outreach, including more than 1,000 resident interviews to interview, to ensure Hayward Rides can serve the needs of Hayward's diverse population. During Trunk or Treat, more than 400 applications for free, for free bikes were collected. Hayward residents with questions about the program or who are interested in applying for a free bike may contact the Hayward Rides team by email at haywardrides@hayward-ca.gov. More information is also available on the City of Hayward website by searching Hayward Rides. We also had the semi-annual compost giveaway. What a busy day Saturday was. Also on that, so the city provided free compost to more than 1,500 Hayward households during this popular semi-annual compost giveaway. Community members lined up early, some before 6:00 a.m. The event began at 7:30 a.m., and staff gave away 5,000 bags of compost at the SkyWest property near Hayward Executive Airport. The organic compost is locally produced by Waste Management and includes food scraps collected from Hayward households. Residents were excited to receive their compost as they prepared to plant their winter vegetables. The next compost giveaway event will be hosted in the spring of 2026. Now, HPL Green Clean Air Certifications, and I know Councilmember Syrop asked about this a couple of meetings ago. I'm happy to announce that our downtown library is now certified as a California green business. Well, you actually asked about the, about the Clean Air Center, but it's related. This certification, it reflects our meeting standards across seven environmental categories, including energy efficiency, solid waste, wastewater management, community engagement, pollution prevention, and transportation and water efficiency. The reviewers also considered our use of renewable energy produced by the rooftop solar panels, using non-toxic cleaning products, and our use of energy-efficient lighting and appliances. In addition, through a Bay Area Air District grant, both the downtown and weeks libraries are now designated as Clean Air Centers. This means we can provide safe public spaces during periods of wildfire smoke and poor air quality. The grant will pay for our use of special air filters in our ventilation systems over the next five years, valued at approximately $25,000. The libraries will be added to the Clean Air Center map, which is maintained by the California Air Resources Board, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I was going to make some more comments about this later, but I just really wanted to thank our Public Works Director, Alex Amiri, and your environmental services team, your transportation team, for just doing a, just a phenomenal job on Hayward Rides program. I know Saturday was the first, sort of the first distribution, and, you know, there was a lot of enthusiasm, there was a lot of support, and, you know, and at the end of the day, there was a lot of just very pleased and happy kids. And, you know, as I was walking around, talking to, you know, the parents about the bicycles, you know, there's the, 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 the energy around creating a generation of cyclists who would be choosing alternative ways of transportation throughout the city. You know, they, they understood it, they got it, they were happy, and, and so they were very pleased. So thank you very much for that. And I know Councilmember Syrop was there, and Councilmember Roche was out there, Councilmember Bonilla. I didn't see, I didn't see you guys with ponchos on, though, but I think it was, it hadn't been raining that time, but, but anyways, I just want to say thank you, and Director Amiri, if you can please tell your team, thank you very much for that. Okay, thank you. I will move on to our next item, which is the, the consent calendar. Items one through three, and nobody has asked me to pull anything. Councilmember.
Sorry.
Mayor Protim Roche.
Yeah. I, I know on these, I forget to ask you ahead of time, but, but I did want to look at, I guess, one and two, I think it is, and then, yeah. So on one, and we did receive some information ahead of time, this has to do with the landscaping contract, and I know Dr. Rollman is here on that, because, and it's asking for an additional allocation of $120,000 over the general fund budget, is that right? I mean, maybe you could come up. And, you know, my question is, you know, at this time, I don't, like, you know, what we're trying to do is reduce anything from the, from the general fund budget, and I know under the, the one on the janitorial services that's coming next, that's a savings, I believe, but that's just a budget allocation savings, not actual savings, when we're trying to stop anything from the general fund, and it's a $3.8 million contract, right? The. Okay, we hit the button, Todd. Yeah.
Over the life of the contract, that is the cost. The annual savings is the one.
The annual savings is the 157, I believe, per year, compared to what we are, for janitorial, compared to what we are paying today.
Okay. And, you know, because I guess, you know, are these contracts based on sort of good times? Like, is there something, you know, because I, like, really am hesitating, do I even say yes, okay, to $120,000 when we're talking about the austere, you know, world we're moving into? Like, that's, you know, a job, potentially, you know, from the general fund. And so, like, are we looking at this in austere times landscaping, like, they only come out twice a month? Or we even pull plants that are so landscape-intensive and put in mulcher rocks, because, you know, if those are the times we're heading into, this could go on for a number of years. So, yeah, what do you say?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think those are definitely things we're looking at and things we've been doing in recent times. The landscape contract maintains existing Route 238. It also is adding Phase 3, which has just now finished being built, has been in plans for a number of years. Same with Jackson, we've been doing improvements on Jackson for a number of years, it just now came due to finish. We added that in the existing contract and ended up at the price that we're at right now. So I think going forward, new things, better design, things to, less water, any way we can save costs, are things we're definitely doing.
Yeah, and I mean, I know, and I know that we're, that we have to agree potentially on this allocation, but, I mean, what do you say to that? Like, wouldn't you rather, you know, potentially, and I don't mean you, but, like, wouldn't the city rather keep a job than, like, go back to the contractors and say, "We can't do this for another $120,000"?
I think we'd all like to do that. I think the other, the other hand of that is, we have fresh plant material everywhere that we spend a lot of money on, that's going to die if we don't maintain it. I think it's an either-or kind of thing, and I think we're doing the best we can moving forward. I think some of the things we've done over the last five years that are coming to roost right now, we're doing the best that we can.
And then, and I know with the next item, and I think we're trying to balance it, right? Those are the notes we received ahead of time, which is that has $150,000 savings on the budget allocation, so I hear that part of it, I just, all right, but you've answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for those answers, Director Rollman. Just wondering, you know, has there been any conversations about potentially just desculping it by $120,000?
Desculping the landscape contract?
Yeah, I mean, because it's already worth, you know, like, $3 million over the, you know, five years, so I was just wondering, would there be?
It is, so when you, so when you look at the current landscape, the current contract that we have, that is Phase 1 and Phase 2, there's a per-square-foot cost. What we've did is, in this current scope, we actually have desculped it already, so we're actually almost doubling the size of the contract on a per-square-foot basis, yet the cost is only going up by 20% because we've tried to probably roll back what we could and really minimize the cost and the frequency that they're out there. But really, as that contract was issued through RFQ, it's bare bones. When I say bare bones, I mean, it's bare bones to get done and keep what we have out there alive.
I understand, thank you so much for that, and I appreciate your diligence as you're out here doing the good work across the city.
Trying, thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask if we were working with Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency moving forward on looking at cost-saving measures for our landscaping in the future?
We absolutely have been, and we absolutely will continue to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers, I'll open this up for public comment. I don't have any public comment online, or I don't have any public comment cards, so I will close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to move the Consent Calendar, Mayor.
Moved by Councilmember Bonilla, seconded by Councilmember Andrews, and if there are no objections, it will unanimously pass. So, thank you. Next item is a work session. Item number four, which is a standing item, which is City Budget Status Update Oral Report by the City Manager as information becomes available. And then I'll have the acting city manager, or interim city manager, Adelman, if she can kick this off.
Yeah, we have a very brief report today because we don't have a lot of new information to offer. I just want to let you know that staff continues to be on track for a November 8th work session on the budget revision. At that meeting, staff will give an updated overview of the budget gap based on year-to-date actuals. Staff will also present a list of options for closing this gap for council's feedback and discussion. Staff plans to bring the FY '26 budget revision for council adoption no later than December 16th, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you for the updates. Just wanted to know when, in the fall revise, that is going to be November 8th or 18th? Just want to make sure we have the right date.
November 18th.
18th, okay, all right. And then, when will we start seeing staff reports for future budget updates or presentations, again, for budget updates?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So we have, I think we have, what, one or two more meetings? Is there any way we can have a staff report for the budget updates of anything that you're able to present to the public?
Sure.
Just in terms of some things that we're doing that are not impacting any kind of negotiations or anything?
Yeah, yes, and the next one, we do, we just ran first quarter numbers, I think I mentioned I was going to share that with council, so we could put that in a report for you next time.
And then, I would also like to see for the future budget updates, maybe this is something to be discussed either at the November 18th meeting, maybe in the December meeting, but I just wanted to see if we could, would the November 18th include a 10-year look-back, five-year projections, 10-year, not 10-year projections, because I know that won't be ready, but those two, can we have a 10-year look-back and a five-year projections?
Yes, we can definitely share a 10-year look-back. Five-year projections, it takes, in terms of us getting something that's accurate, I'm not sure, in terms of where we're allocating our staff resources right now, we're trying to definitely bring you guys calculations. The main goal of that one is calculations on what our expected revenue and expenditures are this year, so most of our time is going through, making sure that we think those numbers are accurate and running actuals. We could potentially put some initial numbers in front of you, I just would be cautious against putting something in front of you that might not be fully vetted.
Okay, and when did you anticipate five-year, 10-year projections, like a ballpark?
Yeah, so our timeline right now is really to have that more in front of council by right after the New Year.
Okay, January?
Yeah, but we'll see what we can do in terms of some initial concepts by the 18th.
Okay, and in January, can we also look at reviewing our budget policies at that time, and also look at a plan of how you present budget to actuals at every budget and finance committee? Or if it can do it, if you can't do it every meeting, have a quarterly report of budget to actuals for the finance committee? And if we can have those reports to the full council in terms of just an update as well?
Yeah, we can, I'm writing this item down, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Roach.
Thank you. I also wanted to know when the, so we have this new, the fiscal auditor that's come in, that we've hired these sort of experts to come in. When will we have their results, and what does that look like as far as, like, a public update, or, I mean, how will we get that information?
So we do expect to have the cash flow report in November, hopefully by the 18th, if not definitely by the end of November.
From these, what are we calling them? What is the name of their role? They're doing a financial review. A financial review, okay.
Yeah, so that's, the plan is, excuse me, to have them in November, hopefully by 18th, otherwise definitely by the end of the month.
And that will be part of a public work session, is that right? So that that will be consumed for the community?
Yeah, whatever we have, we will share at that time.
Because I think there's, you know, part of this problem in the community in general, and, you know, we've already announced that we're reducing our agency funding allotments, and this feeling of, an understanding, everyone has the same understanding of what our analysis is, and I'm sort of hoping this financial analysis might help that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then my other question is, you know, as we've gone through this exercise and realizing how bad things are with our budget, while I know we've talked about nominating to look back and point fingers, I understand that from a morale point of view, but I want to know what we are going to do, and I don't know if it needs to be part of the fall revises, you know, it seems like there was a sort of, like, breakdown of each individual department wasn't being held to account to their actuals, the finance department wasn't being held to their actuals, or to tell that each department, then leadership wasn't saying, "Wait, we see this." And so what is being done to put fundamental structures in place that we do not end up in the same situation again?
So one of the goals of the second step of this, you know, the reviewers, what we're hoping for is for them to give us some, like, projected best practices and all these things that will come out of that. It's not going to be in November, but it'll be Phase 2. Hopefully, early by spring, we should have something like that.
And meanwhile, though, I mean, is every department being held, like, from now on, you are, because it seems like everyone just submitted their, I mean, this is my sort of overview of what happened, each department just submitted and were like, "Yeah, I guess we went overtime," and as long as that was absorbed by revenue, it was allowed to go on, and this did go on, from what I can tell, for about 10 years. And so, like, even without sort of listed best practices, what backstops are happening, like, immediately to say, as soon as you hit your number on this actual line item, you are done with that, whatever that is?
So we are being, and I'm going to give really real credit to Mary's leadership in this, in that we are doing almost real-time monitoring of all of our expenses and revenues. Every department is getting this information, and as I know as someone, as a department that was out there, we would be very frustrated in the feedback we were getting, and we were not able, even if we asked for things, it would be so late by the time we got the information, there was almost no opportunity for corrective action. And so that's one of the things, Mary has been meticulous about maintaining and getting the information out regularly. You know, we're watching the cash flow, we're watching the personnel costs, and every two weeks, the payroll costs are being shared, and then we're also watching cash flow very, very, very regularly. But I'll let Mary speak to that a little more, she's done an amazing job, I just want to give her credit.
I was actually just going to say that it's mostly the analysts and the deputy director and some others, the accounting manager are doing a lot of these reports, not me, so, but I want to give them a shout out.
Your leadership.
Yeah, and, but yes, in short, I think right now we're in a little bit of a tricky moment because we know that the budget we adopted likely is not correct, and so what are we holding people to? Are we holding them to that, or are we holding them to a more realistic budget number? So we are, so it's a little, right now, we're actually doing double-time work, where we're trying to go in and understand what, you know, what some of these numbers, why some of them might be off, and make sure that we're bringing you a budget in December that is realistic about what we can hit. And then, and then, yes, holding people accountable to it, but we are sending everyone their actuals every other week. And then, there already are, we're, it's more on the staffing side, which you're mentioning that we were seeing the overages on the supplies and services side, we do have controls in our financial system, they won't let you go above a certain amount without an override, and so. But even overtime in some of the departments, right? I mean, they're going over that, and I know not every department. Yeah, so that's what, on the staffing side is where we've been seeing the overages. The other categories, we actually do have some decent controls in place, like, you know, costs for contracts or costs for supplies. Okay, yeah, and because I would also assume that, you know, I mean, I would love to see, you know, the finance department staff be empowered to stop, stop the presses when they see things like that, because I feel like there was a culture in the past that just, it went to the finance director and they were like, they just sort of let these things pass. I mean, I don't know what happened, but I feel like everyone needs to be empowered in every step of the way so that it doesn't reach to the top and they are able to just, you know, overlook it. So, okay, well, thank you, I'm glad that's happening in real time, because I feel like it's the only way we're going to fix it going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to both respond to and echo Councilmember Andrews' requests around better financial policies and practices. For example, we have the reserve policy, which we're struggling to maintain right now, and hopefully will build up soon. But in our last Budget and Finance Committee meeting, which I encourage folks to look at, it's not on YouTube, but it's on Granicus, we also looked at the percentage of our payment for staff salary and benefits to, in proportion to the revenue we're bringing in, and typically, what's healthy is 70 to 80%. Right now, we're somewhere around 95%. And so, as a future policy that we're considering, looking at, how do we make sure as a city we find ways to keep it within that 70 to 80 range, so it never hits this current state that we're in again? So I think, just wanted to echo what you were saying, we're definitely looking at that, we're definitely exploring what some of those future policies might look like as we try to get ourselves out of this deficit.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other questions from council. This is a work session, so I will open up for public comment. I don't have any public comment cards, and there is no public comment online, so I will close public comment, and I will move on to legislative business. Item number five, which is Adopt an Ordinance Amending Chapter 10, Article 1, Zoning Ordinance of the Hayward Municipal Code, Rezoning a Property to Low Density Residential Minimum Lot Size 10,000 Square Feet, District in Connection with Zone Change Application. And we did, we did vote on this last council meeting, but according to the process for enacting ordinances, if an ordinance is not unanimously approved at the time of introduction, the ordinance is placed under legislative items. And Mr. City Attorney questioned, Councilmember Bonilla had to recuse himself at the last meeting, will he have to recuse himself from this item this meeting?
The council member can remain at the dais.
And refuse himself.
He does not need to leave the room.
Okay, 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 not to excuse you too soon. But, okay, so I will have, let's see, who is going to report on this?
City Clerk.
Mayor Selena said there is no report on this item.
Of course, okay, okay, so I will go to public comment, and there is no public comment, I don't have any public comment cards, so I'll come back up to the dais and I'll have it.
I'll move the item.
Moved by Councilmember Syrup.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roach, and Madam City Clerk, if you can please take, roll. Okay, moving on to legislative business, item number six, Proposed Amendments to the Maintenance and Repair Sidewalks Ordinance, Introduce an Ordinance Amending Hayward Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Article 2, Streets, Clarifying the Duty to Maintain and Repair Sidewalks. And I believe our director, Maintenance Services Director, Todd Rollman, and our city attorney, Mr. Lawson, will make this report.
Mayor and Council Director Rollman and Assistant City Attorney Sedelnikoff have allowed me to sort of summarize the report and the recommendation. They will join me, if necessary, later in the report. Staffers recommending introduction of an ordinance to amend the municipal code to clarify the duty of property owners regarding the maintenance and repair of sidewalks, and adoption of a resolution establishing a hardship program and a waiver of sidewalk-related encroachment permit fees. Council received a report on October 7th on this issue. The council's Airport and Infrastructure Committee met and made a recommendation in June on the issue, and there was a robust discussion at the meeting of October 7th. And at the heart of the recommendation is, in addition to assuring that adjacent owners are responsible for repairing and maintaining their sidewalks, this action would also create a presumption that owners are also responsible for any resulting injuries that are caused by the disrepair of their sidewalks. At the discussion of October 7th, the council, and in particular, Mayor Pro Tim Roach, asked a number of very, very good, valid questions about how owners could rebut or respond if there is an issue that they claim would not make them responsible. So what we've done with the ordinance is to do some tweaking of the ordinance, and to also add a hardship program in certain cases. What the ordinance does is to create what I would describe as a rebuttable presumption of responsibility, of potential liability. The presumption is a legal presumption that if there is harm, an injury, that the owner is legally responsible. But the ordinance also has exceptions. For example, if there is a city tree that has caused a defect in the sidewalk, a defect meaning there's a displacement that is at least 1 and 3/4 inches, the owner has a defense the owner has a defense that they're not responsible, that the city's defect has caused the injury. And so, in short, that is what the tweaked ordinance does, and that's what's being recommended tonight. There's also a hardship program that's been created in the event owners are not able to make the repairs, which typically requires a notice to the city, an encroachment permit, and a contractor. The, the hardship program is based upon funds that have been identified that are not general fund sources, and there is a resolution with allocating an initial $30,000 in that program for this fiscal year. Let me just stop there. I think that is the core of what's being recommended. Happy to respond to questions and also to defer to Director Rollman or Assistant City Attorney Sedelnikoff, both of whom have put in a great deal of work in presenting to the committee as well as to the council earlier this month. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro-Tim Roach.
Thank you, and I really, I really want to thank you for taking my comments and, you know, and adding some language I think that will make it clear. While I think, I also, you know, had to do my own education to understand what we were trying to do here, and, and so I think this sort of satisfies all of that, but I did, if you don't mind, and, you know, I did ask you ahead of time on, if we could just go through a scenario so that the community would understand that, A, I guess my first question is, A, that this law has always been a California law, that anyone, you know, if you have a property, you have always, and this goes back, I think, a long time, right, like the age of this California law is, you've always had a duty to maintain your sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And I know that, I mean, I look back and it's like a really long time standing law, but the, but the distinction here is that the, the identity of liability was, was unclear, and because there's a lot of these lawsuits coming now, that, that's something the city needed to clear up. That, if there was a fall, you know, trip and fall or something like that, that whose duty it was to be liable for.
Correct. The law, the law changed about 25 years ago, and cities and counties had to catch up. Surrounding jurisdictions within Elamita County have made that adjustment, and Hayward has not.
Okay. That, that was really helpful. And then, in this situation, so if there's a scenario and somebody sees, you know, okay, my sidewalk has buckled, they, it's probably, it's a, they identify that it's a city tree that's buckled the sidewalk, not on their property, they notify the city and say, I see that it's buckled, I, I can't afford to fix it right now, city, you're on notice. Does that notice have anything to do with then sort of reducing their liability, because I've notified the city now, I know it's not my fault, I didn't, out of any kind of negligence of my own, I did not cause that buckle, what is their liability in that moment, in that scenario?
Can we go to slide two? This map depicts the kinds of complaints in Hayward for sidewalk-related defects. No neighborhood is immune from having sidewalk defects. The process when the city receives a complaint, correct me if I'm wrong, is to respond within a couple of days, like 48 to 72 hours to inspect and to initiate repair. If the repair is fairly minimal, that is under 1 and 3/4 inch displacement, the city will grind the sidewalk. If it's a larger displacement, the city will, will require the owner to correct the repair by getting an encroachment permit, that's the waiver program, and a contractor to actually make the repair, which will be followed by a city inspection. Is that correct? Yes.
And if during that process, somebody trips and falls, what then is there, do they now, does the homeowner take the, the presumption is that it's their fault?
Yes, that is a presumption.
In the middle of that process?
Because that's not, unless it's a city tree that's caused the defect, and there is an opportunity to actually prove that in the process.
That it was a city tree, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just, you know, I just, because I do feel like a lot of people are just out there unaware of this, you know, of this responsibility, and this sort of adds obviously, you know, an even more sort of urgent understanding that, you know, that homeowners have now to, to correct what's happening in front of their house. And so, I do, we did talk, I think, a little bit about an education piece about just to make people aware of the, the update in the ordinance here, and I think that, you know, barring our budget situation, I think that really will be important for people to understand that.
If adopted by council, all property owners will receive notice of the amendment in their water bills, which will be going out, well, after, in the next cycle that the council adopts the ordinance, all property owners will receive notice. One other observation is, when we have been looking at the analysis, it is not our belief that property owners, homeowners insurance would be affected.
Okay.
Or increased by this amendment.
Okay, that's helpful, because some of the original, or some of the initial research that I did showed that some, you know, policies are, you know, if they know a city has put an ordinance in place like this to sort of take up where the state leaves off, that there is potentially, they're rejarring homeowners insurance policies to not include the liability for the frontage there. But if you're, if you're saying that that's not true, I think the city does need to go ahead and do this anyway, you know, upon my new understanding, after analyzing all this, I think we do need to go ahead, but I'm glad that's your interpretation of the insurance, so, thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
I know that we have the Adopt a Tree program. Is that another opportunity for education when folks input for a request for a city tree, to give them an update on the ordinance and encourage them to still adopt a tree, because it could still not be, it will not be their liability if it's a city tree?
You're, just to clarify your question, would we have the ability to do some education through the Adopt a Tree program about this ordinance? Yes, I think we could, we could put together a flyer and provide that at the same time.
Okay, and then, wanted to know about the, I don't know what the program's called, but when we do input the sidewalk as part of Access Hayward, is there, is there, are you doing it by area in terms of resolving the issues on sidewalks, or are you just doing it as it comes along? I forgot what you said last time.
For sidewalk repairs, our shop Maintenance Services responds to those as they come in. We don't target specific areas.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Zerminio.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank the team for including the hardship program. I think that's important. We do have quite a few residents who may run into problems, monetary problems, if they have a bad tree, and happy to report that our street has no bad sidewalks, at least according to the map. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions, so I'll open up for public comment. I don't have any cards, I don't see anyone online, so I will close public comment and I'll return to the dais for any questions or, or a motion. Moved by Councilmembers Zerminio.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro-Tim Roach, and Madam City Clerk, if you can please take a role. And item.
Councilmember Goldstein? Yes, thank you.
And item passes with seven yays. Thank you. Next item is legislative business, item number seven, which is adopt a resolution amending, amending the under, the unrepresented employee's salary and benefits resolution for executives, the city clerk employment agreement, and the city attorney employment agreement, and this will come to us by way of our Human Resources Director, Mr. Texan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. This item brings forward amendments to the salary and benefits resolution for the unrepresented executives, the city clerk employment agreement, and the city attorney employment agreement to reflect an executive furlough for this fiscal year. To help lead the organization in realizing cost-saving measures for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, the city's executive team, including the city clerk and city attorney, unanimously support the equivalent of a 4% reduction in annual salary costs for executives. For all executive classifications except for the police chief, this will be achieved by requiring a, an approximate equivalent unpaid furlough of 83.2 hours. What you see on this slide is the cost savings to the general fund, so for all unrepresented executives that are impacted, the 83.2 hours will save approximately 192,900 to the general fund, and for the city-appointed classifications of city clerk and city attorney, that will save approximately 29,500 for the general fund. Staff recommends council adopts the related resolutions, and with that, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. First question is, is Councilmember Andrews.
Actually, I have a comment.
Okay. Mayor Pro-Tim Roach.
Thanks, you know, I, I'm just wondering, you know, so the police chief is part of the executive team, what way isn't he included in this 4%?
Yeah, that's correct. So, he has also agreed to take an equivalent of a 4% reduction, but I will turn it over to city, interim city manager.
Yes, thank you. We are talking about how he can do it, with, instead of furloughs, what the other options are for him. Some of it is to be in alignment with the other, you know, management in the police department. If that's not possible, what the alternatives are, but we're just still talking about how he's going to do it, but definitely doing it.
Okay, great, thank you. Just wanted to know why that was specifically called out like that, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, so what I'll do, did you want to, okay, hold on a second. I will close council comments, open for public comment. I don't have any public comment cards, and there's nobody online with a comment, so I will close public comment and come back up to the dais. Councilmember Andrews.
I just wanted to thank the executive leadership team for making sure that they are being part of the solution and really appreciate their sacrifice here as we get through this, this fiscal emergency, and just want to thank everyone involved in terms of making sure that they are still keeping the city first and making sure we're moving forward with essential services and operations as we continue to resolve this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to echo the similar comments, I want to thank our appointed officers and our executive team for stepping up and demonstrating leadership. I know that we all made agreements in the best interest of our employees, and we found ourselves in a, we are finding ourselves in a really difficult situation, so this, this spirit of collaboration does not go unnoticed, and it's going to be what's required to get us through this storm, so I'm deeply appreciative for your leadership and your sacrifice.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to extend my sincere gratitude to our executive team, our city clerk, and our city attorney. I know how hard you guys work, and I just appreciate you guys coming to the table and working so collaboratively with us on this. Your professionalism and willingness to share in this accountability in addressing the city's fiscal challenges really does say a lot about your leadership, and we appreciate that. Your decision to participate in this 4%, I think demonstrates your deep commitment to the stability and the integrity of the organization, so, again, thank you so much, and on behalf of myself and the entire council, I just want to say thank you for your partnership, for leading with integrity, and for always putting our community first. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I absolutely share all of the comments and sentiments, so thank you, and thank you for everything. So, with that, I will entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Goldstein.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Andrews, and Madam City Clerk, you can take the role. And item passes unanimously with seven ayes. Thank you very much. Next item is council reports and announcements. Councilmembers Zerminio.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm reminding you to make sure that you vote next Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I did vote, and I dropped my ballot in the parking lot there at Chebault College.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I was there. Okay. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. As we heard from one of our public commenters today, today is Public Safety Appreciation Day, so I just wanted to take a minute to extend my deep appreciation and gratitude for all of the public safety professionals in Hayward, our police officers, our firefighters, our dispatchers, our emergency medical teams. Your unwavering commitment to protecting our community every day is something that makes Hayward a great place to live and to call home. Just wanted to thank you for your dedication, your professionalism, and the courage that you embody every day, and for providing the very best services to our city. Thank you for standing ready for every emergency, safeguarding our neighborhoods, and keeping Hayward safe and resilient in a place that we can all call home. Thanks again, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for your comments. I don't have, oh, Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to address that this past weekend or these past five days, we had a bit of a scare around federal presence in the Bay Area, and I just wanted to appreciate staff for really stepping up to try to find ways to communicate to our community what resources are currently available. I feel deeply that, you know, we have given a message to our community that the institutions that are in Hayward have your back, we stand with our families, and I think that's good. I think it's good that we're not spreading panic, but at the same time, I also want to express that it's important that we are all prepared, and I, and I think that's really the posture I'd like to see our shitty, our city shift towards, because that's one of the ways that we keep ourselves safe, is by making sure that it's not just folks that may know somebody who's an immigrant or not going to these trainings, but that we're all getting trained up, we're all learning our rights, so we're able to share that knowledge for our neighbors who may not be able to attend those trainings. There are great organizations like Faith in Action East Bay that are doing verification trainings, there are organizations that are doing foot patrol trainings. I've been on calls with aldermen from Chicago who are telling me about schools where every morning and afternoon, there are volunteers doing shifts around the perimeter of the schools to keep their families safe, and working with their teachers' unions to create sanctuary teams. So, the sky is really the limit in all the ways that we can take care of each other, and I hope that we can encourage our residents, as well as ourselves, to think through how we can build these structures to look after one another. So, I just wanted to thank staff and also say there's more work to go to keep each other safe, and I'm hoping we can encourage our community to prepare. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, seeing no more announcements or reports, there are no council referrals, and Mr. City Attorney, the meeting is over at 8:07. Meeting adjourned.